I'd like to call to order Tiverton Town Council meeting of April 28, 2014. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shavitt.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Rodrick.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes ma'am.
All present.
Thank you. The consent agenda: approval of minutes of the regular council meeting, April 7, 2014. Counselor Gerlach abstains, absent. Approval of executive session minutes, April 7, 2014. Counselor Gerlach abstains, absent. Approval of special meeting minutes, February 5, 2014. Approval of the following executive session minutes: special meeting, February 5, 2014; January 13, 2014; December 9, 2013. Counselor DiMediris abstains, absent. Receipt of minutes of the following boards and commissions: Art Committee, Library Board of Trustees, Planning Board Two, Pocassett Hill Cemetery Commission, Street Advisory Committee, Waste Water Management Commission, Street Advisory Committee. Correspondence receive and file: Tiverton School Committee, North Kingston School Committee, East Greenwich School Committee, and Smithfield School Committee. Resolutions opposing House Bill 7465 and Senate Bill 2411, contract continuation. Barrowville Town Council: resolution supporting Senate Bill 2018 and House Bill 7430 relating to taxation; Senate Bill 20104 and House Bill 71126 relating to background checks; Senate Bill 2085 and House Bill 7628 relating to low and moderate income housing; House Bill 7247 relating to municipal road and bridge revolving fund; House Bill 7270 relating to courts and civil procedures; House Bill 7747, Education Equity and Property Tax Relief Act; Senate Bill 2032 relating to courts and civil procedures; Senate Bill 2078, Levy and Assessment on Local Taxes and Resolutions opposing Senate Bill 2593 relating to public use of private lands, liability limitation, and opposing 2014 Senate Bill 2677, Levy and Assessment of Local Taxes. North Kingston Town Council: resolution supporting repeal of straight party vote option. Tiverton Conservation Commission: copy of letter sent to Federal Aviation Administration referred to Town Administrator. North Tiverton Fire District regarding Bid Award, Godden Heights Water Main Project: copy of letter to General Manager Paul St. Laurent and response from North Tiverton Fire Department Attorney Eric P. Chappell. Bruce Cox, Harbor and Coastal Waters Management, to Ridott, Secana River Bridge Boat Access Ramp. Additional tourism suggestions submitted by Barbara Pelletier. Kate Micho, Administrative Officer, Report of Activities for March 2014; 2014 Rhode Island Kids Count Fact Book. Denise Saret, Treasurer, Distribution of March 2014 Budget and Revenue Reports; Distribution of Quarterly Summary Report for Division Municipal Finance ending March 31, 2014. Mackenzie Mellow, Approval of 5K on May 4 to Benefit Pediatric Brain Cancer, Senior Project to Start and Finish at Grinnell's Beach, Recommendation from Police Chief Blakey. Request from Michael Mark Jean, Abandonment of a Portion of Roy Street from Crandall Road to Hemlock Street, Scheduling of a Public Hearing on June 9. Pauline Rashad, Request for Streetlights Installed on Ladue Lane from Winterberry to Teaberry, Recommendation from DPW Director and Police Chief Blakey, Notice will be sent to Ms. Rashad. Bruce Cox, Harbor Commission Chair, Request Town Administrator correspond with Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District for assistance regarding bacterial water quality concern on Seepawat Marsh, referred to Administrator. Leroy Kendricks, Waste Water Management Chairman, Request Approval to Forward Waste Water Facilities Plan Update to Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management for a Formal Approval and Write-M Review of Town's Waste Water Facilities Plan Update. Any items to be removed?
Mr. President, I would just like to remove CA 7, please.
CA 7.
And I would remove CA 5, please.
CA 5. Any others?
I saw someone.
I want everything to remove, except a question as for the minutes for the other boards. The Recreation Committee, are we going to get minutes for them? The last time we got minutes, they were over a year old.
I will ask the Town Administrator to check on that, please. Anything else to be removed?
Ms. President, CA 9, Pauline Rashad. She was called and she said she wanted to attend, so I wasn't sure if she was here.
Is Pauline Richard or Pauline Rashard here?
No. Okay.
Okay, I will.
Consent would be approved or recognized.
I think for CA 9, why don't we withdraw CA 9 just so it can be continued? Because otherwise no action there.
Okay, I will entertain a motion regarding the rest of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Pelletier, CA 5.
Yeah, this is the 2014 Rhode Island Kids Count Fact Book. I thought I may have seen someone here who was with that organization, and if not, then I am... Nope, okay. So, never mind.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Gerlach, CA 7.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if Ms. Mellow is here. Sure, I just... Would you like to come up? Just went out on a limb there.
Please, have a seat.
I just wanted to take a moment so that you understood this is part of the consent agenda, and usually as part of that, there's not an opportunity to come before the council and kind of talk a little bit about it, but I just wanted to commend you on your project. When I read the proposal and hearing what it is that you're trying to do, I thought it was fantastic, and you deserve a lot of credit for kind of taking that on, not only to raise funds for such an important cause, but kind of all of the organization around that. So I just wanted to, you know, if you wanted to say two words about it, you don't have to, I just wanted to kind of give you the floor if you wanted to.
Mackenzie, would you just bring the mic to me?
Just so that people can hear you.
Pediatric cancer in general is... Only 4% of fundraisers get sent to pediatric cancer, and like, there's a little boy in town who's suffering from one of the rarest brain cancers, and he is just like the happiest little boy, and he just like touched my heart, and I decided that I wanted to research his brain cancer, and there's only 0.6 out of a million people get his type of brain cancer, and it just like inspired me to try and raise money, because like, people donate money to breast cancer all the time, and don't get me wrong, breast cancer is such an awful thing to have, but children are dying, and like, they don't have the funds like people who are giving it to breast cancer and tons of other different causes. So, that's why I dedicated my research to pediatric brain cancer and all the money that I raised. I'm also holding a hat day in school, and this 5K will go towards Hasbro Pediatric Brain Cancer Research.
Sure. And this is part of your senior project?
Yes.
Okay. And just, I just, so folks who might be watching this on TV kind of get... So, the 5K race for pediatric brain cancer is taking place on May 4?
Yep.
Start time at 9:00 AM down here at Grinnell's Beach in Tiverton. $10 minimum donation for all runners, and then if folks have any questions, they can contact you directly at your email address, which I'll read right now. It's mackenzie.mellow@gmail.com.
Yep.
Sunday, 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 May 4. So, great.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you for taking up a cause.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Chief, if I may, congratulations on the effort. Ms. Mellow actually approached a School Resource Officer, Liam Black, and he has volunteered his time to work with your event, so congratulations. Good luck.
Great, great. Yeah, and congratulations.
Thank you. Just wanted to note, though, it's important.
I think you should get extra credit on your senior project for coming before the Town Council.
And now you have...
Thank you.
We're all going to be watching now.
Great.
Some of us might be running.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on CA 7.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
In the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to continue CA 9.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion in second to continue CA 9 to our next meeting.
The next meeting's fine.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, I'm sorry, I would move that we move, that we... I propose that we move item G3, the acceptance of Blackbird Pumping Station and blah, 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 to right after A12, the open public forum.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, we'll begin with A12, Barbara Pelletier, Tourism.
This is still a good place to get something out in the public. I was... You received some additional information, and the man is bringing tourists into the four corners. And I actually thought over the weekend, and then especially today when I read the article about the farms and the farming in Tiverton, that maybe we could get an agri-tour or interest in this town since we do have some farms. So, any farmer, like a dairy farmer, or anybody else who thinks he might want to have some visitors, should try to contact me, and I would try to see if Mr. Strickland will consider bringing a targeted interest group to Tiverton for agricultural experience, which we traditionally have been an agricultural town, and so that is one thing I want to get out. And the other thing I thought of yesterday at a speech about Fort Barton, which gave you enough time to think, because it was fairly slow-paced, that how wonderful, and they did present project maps onto a screen, how interesting it would be if we make, like some tourist destinations have Plexiglas maps that you layer from the time of the beginning of whatever the site, Citadel or whatever it was, up to present day, and with all the wealth of talent at the high school and senior projects, maybe somebody could spearhead a few children with their teachers, could spearhead a research in Fort Barton and raise the funds and fabricate such a map of Fort Barton, which I think would be immensely educational for anyone. It could be housed when, if ever assets is repurposed into a whatever, whatever center we eventually put it in, because it'll take some time to do anything, it does, we know that. So, I would like to get that out there, so maybe somebody can think about it, so we can have a layered Plexiglas map of from Indian times to present times, including the trails, and I think it would generate some interest. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, item G3, Leroy Kendricks, Waste Water Management Chairman.
He's in the clerk's office.
Good evening.
So, we are requesting tonight that the town accept the Blackbird Court Pumping Station. As so is often done when a developer develops a site, they have to put in pumping stations. They don't really want to be in...
Can I ask you quickly, is this some country view?
Yes.
Okay. I need to accuse myself.
Yeah. They don't want to be involved in the wastewater disposal business, so after meeting the requirements of the town and the commission, they like to give, gift the pump station over to the town so that we can take care of it.
Very generous of you.
Yes, it's wonderful. So it increases the number of pump stations that we take care of to five. Mr. Lynn Cord has gone through all the, has done the inspections, and everything is in order, and so is the recommendation of the Waste Water Management Commission to accept the, that the town accept the pump station.
Any questions from the council?
Has there been an inspection of the pump station?
There have been several inspections of the pump station, and we will do one additional inspection just prior to us taking it over, and the developer has agreed to remedy any problems that that last inspection brings forward.
Has there been anything based on your inspection so far?
The major thing that was done, or that was brought up, was the cutters for the two pumps, they're both grinder pumps. That was recommended that the grinders be changed out because they were worn. That was done about six months ago.
So you don't anticipate anything, but just in case, we've got...
I don't anticipate anything, but it has been, it has been six months since the last inspection. This has been going on for quite a while, and so I didn't want to have any additional inspections until I got the final okay.
And when would be the target date to...
At our earliest convenience.
Sure. And forgive my ignorance here, but what's the typical lifespan of a pump station? Is that quantifiable in average terms?
Mechanical equipment is very, very tough to quantify, especially seeing as how it's a very harsh environment, but 15 to 20 years is a good rule of thumb.
And how old is this one, do we know?
This one is approximately eight years old.
Okay.
Eight to 10 years old.
And these assets would be part of any district transfer that we talk about once a district is established?
That is correct.
Yes.
Great.
Anything else? I entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve acceptance of the Blackbird Court Pumping Station and its associated infrastructure, subject to the inspection results and completion of any remedial action that's needed.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor? unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Advertise Public Hearings. Sam Schuford, Church Community Housing Corporation, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Application, first public hearing.
Good evening, councilors. I'm actually Christian Beldon with Church Community Housing Corporation. It's good to see you all again. Sam was helping me get this on the agenda. This is the first of two required public hearings for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The purpose of this hearing is to notify the residents of the town. The town intends to apply for these funds. This year, there are $250,000 available to the town to apply for. These funds are available for activities that primarily benefit low and moderate income folks, including economic development activities, housing development activities, public facilities improvements, and public service activities. Last year, the town was awarded $122,612 through this program. Those funds went to support activities at the Women's Resource Center, the East Bay Community Action Programs, Health and Dental Program, the Community Housing Resources Housing Hotline, the Community Housing Land Trust, St. Elizabeth's Adult Day Services, and the Social Ventures Rhode Island Micro Enterprise Incubator, as well as the housing rehab operating activities that Church Community Housing administers. The vast majority of the $122,000 went to the town's North Tiverton Streetscape and Sewer Expansion Program. That was $83,652 that was awarded there. This year, we've received several letters of intent from various agencies, many of them the same agencies that have received funding in the past. Again, we anticipate that the town will be applying for funding for the North Tiverton Sewer Expansion Project. We've received a letter of intent from Four Seasons Mobile Home Park to replace their water lines and repair the roads afterwards. That's a $25,000 request. East Bay Community Action Program would like to make structural repairs to a section of their Human Services Facility at 1048 Stafford Road. They're asking for $5,450. The Women's Resource Center is asking for continued support for their activities. They're asking for $4,000. Community Housing Resources Board, the Housing Hotline, is asking for $4,000 to continue their fair housing activities. They provide housing counseling and support, and increasingly, they're providing emergency motel sheltering for displaced folks as well. The Community Housing Land Trust has submitted a letter of intent for a $3,000 request. The St. Elizabeth's Community Cornerstone Adult Services, the Nancy Brayton Osbourne Adult Day Center has also provided a request for $5,000. Social Enterprise Greenhouse, which was formerly Social Ventures Partners Rhode Island, they expanded their micro enterprise incubator program last year into Newport County. That activity was funded. They are going to apply for funding again this year. That amount is to be determined. And then lastly, Church Community Housing is again requesting funding for our housing operating activities. We administer the housing, the revolving housing rehab loan program, as well as providing homebuyer education. We do down payment assistance, foreclosure prevention. So for all of those activities, we're requesting $20,000 in support this year. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, and I know that there are some representatives from some of the agencies who'd also like to speak.
Okay, this being a public hearing, are anyone wishing to come forward?
Good evening, Susan Skank, Chief Operating Officer at East Bay Community Action Program. We own and operate the Health and Human Services Facility at 1048 Stafford Road here in Tiverton. We are asking that the town include us in your 2014 Community Development Block Grant Application for $5,450. We would like to make structural repairs to that part of our building which houses our community food pantry. The total project will be $13,900. We've already received $3,000 in support from the Rhode Island Community Food Bank and the Champlin Foundations, and we're requesting the remaining balance in equal amounts from the Community Development Block Grant Programs in Tiverton and Little Compton. So that center is quite a beehive of activity. We're glad to be here to provide services and to support the town in what you're doing for your own residents. That food pantry in 2013 served a little over 400 individuals. So I appreciate any support you can give us, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
My name's Jerry Manning, and I'm with St. Elizabeth's Community, representing now the Nancy Osbourne Brayton, Nancy Brayton Osbourne Adult Day Center here in Little Compton. Last year, I want to first thank you for your support through the Community Development Block Grant. The funds that were awarded, supported 21 Tiverton residents, 85% are low to mod income. So the funds really helped us continue providing program for them and their families so that the families can keep them home and take care of them longer before putting them into long-term care, which is very, very expensive. So, we've got a lot of happy reports, and this year we've started a program, Healthy Aging Through Nutrition and Exercise, and the residents here are loving it. They're going home, feeling physical, physically fit, able to avoid falls, and getting nutrition together to help their mental cognitive skills too. So, we are applying again for this year so that we can continue providing additional services. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sally Dwyer. I was watching the Middletown Meeting, yes I do, because we can learn something from everyone, and they asked the question if handicapped accessibility could be paid for at the public schools by this fund, and the answer was yes, Christian? Okay, so I'd just like to say that in public, because Nancy was just talking to me about the voting, going to vote and everything, and accessibility. So there are funds available to the public schools for that, so I just want to thank you.
Schools upon going to request those funds?
I don't know, I just came to talk to you, I just heard about it.
Okay. Can we just qualify the issue in terms of accessibility?
Yes, we've received the report from the state on polling locations, and we have several issues with handicap accessibility throughout almost all our polling places, including some of the schools. So I will speak with Matt and see what we can't do to propose something forward for that as well. We don't have figures on it yet, but some of it, it's going to get a little extensive.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, Jimmy Winters from the Community Housing Resource Board, Housing Hotline.
Say your name again.
Jimmy Winters.
Jimmy, okay.
Thank you very much for your past support, and we hope you will continue to support us in the future. We help anyone who has a housing problem or complaint, they need emergency housing, temporary shelter, we provide that, and hotels, old motels. We provide education. We try to ensure that everyone has safe, sound, and secure housing. Recently, we had a call from a Tiverton resident on a Friday evening about 5 o'clock. She had no heat, she had no oil, but the oil company would not give her oil unless her heating facility was fixed. We had some funds in our emergency fund, and we were able to bring it out on a Friday evening, and so she would have heat. She didn't have enough money to get to Newport. But we'll come out, if you need something, we will come out, if you know somebody, please give us a call, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone from the public? Anyone else from the public?
I think someone's coming. It's definitely someone's coming. This white just pushed him.
Hi, David Brayton, water operator at Four Seasons Mobile Home Park, and we request it, help from the fund for, we're replacing, hoping to replace our water system, our water distribution system, and we're going to need new roads. Actually, we need new roads to begin with, but when they get through digging them up, we're definitely going to need, they're relatively short, but we'll call them driveways, I guess, into the Mobile Home Park. We call them streets, but that's what we're looking for, and hoping to help us out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Third final time, anyone else from the public? Okay, this portion of the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Wojcik. Anything from the town side that has not been discussed, other than the ADA that was just thrown in your lap?
Actually, I had a question for Christian on that. So, the rubric that that would fit under would be code compliance, ADA, accessibility?
The CDBG program's purpose, it qualifies because there are certain categories that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development presume to be low and moderate income. So, the town has been able to fund improvements to the senior center in the past because the elderly are presumed to be low and moderate income, victims of domestic violence are presumed to be low and moderate income, and the disabled are presumed to be low and moderate income. So, this is, because this is accessibility improvements for people with physical disabilities, it automatically qualifies as presumed to be low and moderate income.
So you've more or less answered the next question, but I'm going to ask it so you can answer it explicitly. So the location... So the location is irrelevant. It doesn't need to be in North Tiverton, it can be anywhere in town?
Correct.
Okay. The other thing I had was from the Director of Public Works, who was looking for money to finish off the final course on Walnut Street, about $38,000. But, you know, keep going, Steve. Get a longer shopping list, if you will.
Christian, why don't you stay just a second? No questions.
Very shortly, we're going to be doing a handicap accessible project, rebuilding the sidewalks and completing sidewalks on Walnut Street. It's a section right dead center of North Tiverton, the area you're talking about. We provide an access corridor from the Bourne Mill all the way up to State Street, where there isn't one now. We have 40 steps, which is also part of a cleanup project we have. So we'll have a walking path up from the bottom of the hill to the top, and then we'll have a handicapped accessible route. And the base course and part of the sidewalks is already funded with $28,000 from CDBG funds, and that construction will be done very shortly, within a month, and I was requesting the second half of that to complete the project out of next year. So that just came about with the project of Walnut Street, and we didn't know about that for, you know, very long, and it came about quick. So it didn't get on a very program type of way, but I guess this is how we can hopefully get it in.
Yes. If you can just develop a scope of work and provide an estimate of the cost to do that work, if you can get that to us, then we'll actually write the application with that backup documentation, and we'll, we have a second public hearing that's required, so at that time, we'll include it in our list of activities that the town will be applying for, if the town wants it.
Is there a date by which we should get that in?
Well, we're asking all of the sub-recipient agencies to get their applications into us by May 1st, so if that's possible, that would be terrific.
Mr. Belucchi will have it to you by May 1st. I'm sure of it.
All right.
And I just have, last year, I think we also had requested some funds for the senior center for the kitchen area. Will that also be included in this year's? They didn't receive the funds.
I think that work proceeded without them.
No.
No, this was to replace.
A commercial kitchen.
Oh, that didn't happen.
Replace the stove and the refrigerator. If we could get Janice to, the Director of the Senior Center to, perhaps pull that paperwork out from last year.
Okay.
Can we alter our strategy slightly?
Yeah. I'm looking at you. Does it have to be a new program, or be an existing operation?
No. I mean, you know, the priorities change for the state each year, and oftentimes, it's just, well, they didn't fund this other town's request for a few years in a row, and so now they're going to fund it that year, and that means that another town won't get what it's asking for. So, yeah, it's certainly worthwhile to resubmit. Just because it didn't get funded one year doesn't mean that they won't fund it at some point.
And another question, this says the maximum is $250,000. I thought last year it was like $300,000.
It was, actually. It changes, not every year, but it changes sometimes, and it's based on a formula that the state has, where they assess the need of the town. But actually, this year, the reason that it was reduced by $50,000 is that the state created three set-asides. They created a set-aside for housing rehab activities, housing development activities, and homelessness activities. And so basically, for the total $5 million that the state awards through the CDBG program, they took $2 million out, and they put them into those set-asides so that funding is available on an ongoing basis throughout the year instead of this once-a-year CDBG cycle. So as a result, it reduced the amount that the towns and cities can apply for by, on average, $50,000 for every community. That said, you may, in fact, I'm glad that you brought that up, because it's possible that somebody will come before you over the course of the year looking to apply for those funds, and they, CDBG funds have to come to a town. They can't go to an individual recipient, so they would have to apply through you for those funds.
Probably if you could provide us with more information on that at the next hearing.
Sure. The Church Community administers the revolving loan fund, and so that has about $2 million in it. It's adequately capitalized. We've been, you know, we make loans, and then revenue comes in, and so based on the need that's present in the community, we haven't been applying for additional capital funds for that for some years now. So that's probably not relevant. But the housing development funds basically were added to the Building Homes Rhode Island Program that's administered by Rhode Island Housing. So when a developer goes to apply for that funding, now that pool of funds is larger. And then they did the same thing with the Consolidated Homeless Fund. They added, so that was $1.1 million for the housing development, about, I think, $300,000 for the housing rehab, and then $900,000 for the homelessness set-aside that was combined with the CHF funds. And I can get you more detail on that, too.
Just so, if people do come in, then we can, no wait, what they're referring to.
Falls under those guidelines, yeah.
Yes.
And then we can send them over.
Okay.
Also, would a van for the senior center fall under that?
The van for the senior center is an eligible activity, yes, because the elderly are presumed to be low mod income. In fact, the town of Little Compton was awarded funding last year for a seniors' van.
Mr. Wojcicki, would you work with the Director of the Senior Center?
Yes, sir. It's an ongoing quest to get them another set of wheels.
Absolutely.
As long as it's done by May 1st.
Well, it is your application. While we would appreciate it if it wasn't too much later than that, so that we have time to put all of this together, that would be great, but, you know, it's your application.
I think last year, the timeline was tight also, if I remember right.
Yeah. It used to be more consistent. This year, the application is much later, and they didn't, there was a delay with HUD where they weren't allowed to start the application round as early as they usually do, so it was pushed later. That way, it was compressed.
Trying to clean up from the sequester.
I don't know.
I know.
Okay.
Anything else from the council? Anything, Mr. Wojcicki? Okay. Thank you, Christian.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Public presentation. Town Administrator Rydat, presentation regarding roundabout on Stafford Road.
Mr. President, I'm going to allow Rydat to do most of the talking, but I will introduce the topic. All around the country has become a matter of practice now to consider resolving difficult traffic situations involving multiple streams of traffic with roundabout configuration. And there are a variety of safety and other improvements that roundabouts offer, and I'm sure Steve will explain the difference between rotary and roundabouts, but they are not to be confused. They have different functions and different outcomes. And in this particular instance, while the configuration might be considered in various places around town, Stafford Road is the first and foremost on the list at Rydat. So go ahead, Mr. Prestow.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Steve Prestow. I'm from Rhode Island DOT. I have a couple of people with me here tonight as well. Francisco Laverre, who's also from DOT, he's a roundabout expert. He's given this presentation to many cities and towns throughout Rhode Island, as well as other New England states, and even took it on the road to Mexico on his own dime to promote the use of roundabouts and the design of roundabouts. Also with us is Jill Nascimento, who's the project manager on this, on this project, and Bob Clinton, who, from DHB, he's the consultant on this job. In March, we came in with our conceptual plan and met with the town manager, the police chief, the town planner, as well as the public works director, and showed them what we were looking at at this intersection with, and how it's, due to the geometry, it lends itself to being a good candidate for a roundabout. There's not a lot of, there's no land acquisition that, at this intersection, we can fit it all within the footprint of the state land with a minor sliver off of one corner. And Francisco will get into the benefits of the roundabout. We promoted everything, presented everything to those members, and all agreed that what we're presenting tonight is the best alternative for this intersection. And we just wanted to come get the blessing of the town council to go forward with this project and continue the design. The project history, the town had requested the State Traffic Commission to look at improvements at this intersection based on safety and speeding issues. The State Traffic Commission did come back and recommended the approval of a roundabout based on the, again, the footprint of the intersection and the benefits that are coming out from the installation of roundabouts, both from a safety standpoint as well as an operations standpoint. The existing conditions over the five years of 2009 to 13, there were an average of about five crashes per year at between a couple of intersections that we included in the study area, being William S. Canning in Stafford, as well as Stafford and Hurst as well. The geometry is kind of awkward. It's a Y-type intersection, makes things difficult pulling out of Hurst, because you're not sure if they are going on William S. Canning, or are they continuing north up to Stafford Road? As well as there is some vertical curtain, horizontal curves within the confines of the intersection. The speed, when we did go out and do our speed study, the speed limit being 40 miles per hour, our 85th percentile speed came in at 40 miles per hour, which is kind of surprising. I thought it was going to be a little higher, based on what we had heard regarding this intersection. This was taken during the day, when there was good sight distance and good weather as well. And basically, the State Traffic Commission, when they do present their findings for speed studies, they try to set the speed limit as close as practicable to the 85th percentile speed, meaning that 85% of the public is driving at that speed or lower. You'll always get the 15% that are just going to be, not to say reckless, but that are just not going to drive considerably, considering the nature of the roadway. And our average speed out here was 35 miles per hour. The volumes, as you can see there, 13,000 on Stafford Road south of Hurst Lane, 6,000 north of it, and William S. Canning Boulevard takes the most of it to head in toward Route 24 with 14,000 vehicles per day, and 1,400 on Hurst Lane. Our proposed improvements are to, as I mentioned, a little foreshadowing, I guess, is to install a roundabout at the intersection of Stafford and William S. Canning Boulevard, and we'll work Hurst Lane into the configuration of that, of those improvements. By doing that, we'll restrict left turns from Hurst Lane onto Stafford Road. To access that move now, they would have to make a right turn, go into the roundabout, and do a U-turn coming out of it. We felt that was the best scenario for, to include the safety of the people exiting Hurst, because the roundabout is, as Francisco will get into, it's a very low-speed alternative, so it's not dealing with the crossing that they currently deal with right now, as well as to install a left turn lane into Hurst Lane, so that access will still be totally allowed. As part of the project, we would install new sidewalk and curb where there are existing sidewalk and curb, as well as make pedestrian connections as needed throughout the corridor. And the roundabout itself is a reduction in right angle crashes, injury crashes as well, projected decrease up to 80%, as has been shown around the country, and Francisco will get further into those numbers as well. And the level of service is, we kind of put acceptable, but it's, I think it's better than acceptable when you look at the peak hours. Even expanding it into a 20-year projection, we're still getting acceptable level of service of level of service C, which if you get to most intersections that have traffic signals, don't in the peak hour get level of service C. So the roundabout itself will be, as I say, a great safety improvement in reducing crashes. Any crashes that occur tend to be fender benders as opposed to your serious right angle collisions, as well as you can get your reduction in speeds. It forces people to go slower through the area. At that, I'd like to introduce Francisco Laverre, who can go through, as Matt had said, the difference between rotaries and roundabouts, and how the country is progressing to these types of intersections.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, everybody. Very good comment on that, making sure that we do not confuse roundabouts with rotaries. In many parts of the country where these intersections are popping out, they're actually pointing out, we're not doing what New England did beforehand, which is those big traffic circles that you see all over the place, especially on the Cape in New York State. They are terrible. They are horrible. They are horrible. That's why we're not doing those anymore. But in general, one of the reasons for which we're proposing roundabouts at this location, but also at any location that we're studying in the state, is because they are, when we have a single-lane roundabout, that's the safest upgrade intersection that you can have. The only thing that can be safer when two roads intersect is if you have an overpass. There is nothing that can be safer when you have a single-lane roundabout. Because we do not have signals, we don't have to stop and wait. If there is a broken equipment that is not operating properly, you have to wait sometimes on a signal for 20 seconds, 25 seconds before you can actually get a green. Once you get there, you can actually, if there is nobody conflicting with you, you easily go through the intersection. So we have the capability to manage a lot of vehicles, even more vehicles than what you would be able to do with a four-way stop control intersection. They are good for all modes of traffic. I'm talking about from a pedestrian, from children, from someone who has an impairment and has, requires a wheelchair, someone in a bicycle, someone in a motorcycle, passenger car, school buses, fire trucks, any kind of vehicle that you can imagine can travel through these roundabouts if they are properly designed. And we're actually doing our homework. We're trying to find out, we're actually finding out, what is the biggest vehicle that is going to travel through this intersection? I believe that the proposed design is considering WB67, which is the biggest truck that you're going to find on the freeway. So if one of those happens to go through this intersection, they will be able to negotiate this. Because they move traffic very well, we don't have the pollution, and they offer us the flexibility of skewed angles like this intersection in particular. And the best benefit, in my opinion, as a community, is that you have, and you have an opportunity to improve the aesthetics of your intersection, your gateway. We were saying, roundabouts are going to be between 150, 50, and 233, 230 feet in diameter for the circle. When you were talking about rotaries, especially with New York and sometimes in the Cape, you can go as far as 600 feet. Those are not circles. They are NASCAR circles. People go very fast on them. And the operating speeds are very different. In a well-designed, modern roundabout, you're going to be able to drive between 15 and 25 miles an hour. Would you go beyond that, 25, 26, you are still going to feel that you're going to tip, which you will not. But that will actually have the effect on the driver to slow down when they are negotiating, when they are driving in the circle. When you have a circle that is very steep, it's very conducive to have higher speeds. So if you go to the Cape, you can enter any of those circles at 35, 40 miles an hour very, very easily. When you're trying to negotiate and entering traffic that is going at 40 miles an hour, it's going to be harder for you than when you're trying to negotiate and find a gap when you're encountering traffic at 15, 25 miles an hour. We have some deflection at the entry. Under traffic control, we have yield control, vehicles who are already in the circle have to right-of-way. Pedestrian access, we do not allow pedestrians to go into the center early. I mean, if someone wants to go there, there is no fence, there is not a mod that's going to stop them, but by design, we are not trying to encourage anybody to gather in the center. And the direction of the circulation is, ah, the island. This is a 160-foot diameter traffic circle rotary that New York State replaced with a 220-foot diameter in October 2000. This is outside of Interstate 87 in Kingston, New York. When the people from the New York State Department of DOT came to the town and proposed this, the main reason was, as you can see, huge queues, there is a lot of traffic here, because the big circle could not manage the traffic. And obviously, we think that bigger is better, bigger you're going to be able to manage better, more traffic. I'll give my kudos to the people, to the engineers from New York State. Trying to sell a smaller circle as a solution for this intersection, I don't think it was easy. It clearly does not play with any law. It clearly does not play with any logic. Once they completed this project, they actually found out that intersection was working much better, much better than before. And obviously, some people were skeptical, and even the engineers were not convinced about how this was working. They measured the traffic beforehand, they measured the traffic afterwards with this smaller circle, they were handling approximately the same amount of traffic, not even a little bit higher. So they have a good capacity. They can handle that. Now, this is an old image, you can actually see, still see a little bit of the trace of the old circle. Look at that. Clearly a small NASCAR, NASCAR ring. Now, those are things that are being done somewhere else. What about closer to here? This is another big circle, right side of the Union Station in Worcester, Massachusetts. Massachusetts Department of Transportation worked with the city of Worcester to replace that big rotary with this small roundabout. And that's working great. It's very urban area. Now, I've been saying that they are the safest upgrade intersection that can possibly exist. Why is that? If you have a traditional intersection, like most of the intersections that we have on any roadway in Rhode Island, your country, when you're trying to have this movement, you have possibly someone who is not looking at the signal, who is not looking at stop sign hitting you in this direction. They could be texting, they could be impaired, they could be speeding. And when you get an impact on a right angle, your chances of having an injury are very high, or even possibly dying. With a roundabout, with a circle in general, but specifically with a roundabout, you eliminate that kind of pollution. If someone is going to hit you, they're going to hit you in a sidesway, or someone's going to rerun you. Granted, yes, there is going to be crashes, that's the risk of being on the roadway. However, the type of crashes that cause high severity injuries are completely gone. Not only the number of conflicts is reduced from 32 to 8, but also the ones that can cause you a high severity crash are completely eliminated with a roundabout. They are really good, especially in urban areas. Our temporary parking lot, we actually have to park the cars there for 15, 20, 40 seconds, 80 seconds, depending on the location where you are. That's why we need to have, as engineers, so many lanes. You can see four lanes in this direction, two were through, this one for the left turns, this one for the right turns. When the city of Asheville, North Carolina, replaced this signal with a modern roundabout, they were able to handle the same amount of traffic with a single-lane roundabout. They haven't had many issues with this. And as you can see, this one was actually used as an access control. The community had an opportunity to put a median with some shrubs, some plants, makes it a little more pleasant. Now, all of that sounds logical. What about studies? 2001 study from the insurance agency of Highway Safety, the people who pay the bill when you get into a crash. If anybody is interested about reducing crashes, it's the people who pay the bill. They actually found that 24 intersections that were compared from a traffic signal in or self-control to a roundabout, total number of crashes reduced by 40%. The ones that cause an injury, close to 80%. The ones that could actually send you to the hospital or somewhere else worse could be, were reducing to 90%. Now, these numbers, how do they mean? How do they compare? When we engineers are trying to reduce some crashes in an intersection that these signals lies and we're finding out that a lot of people making left turns, then we decide to put a left turn lane dedicated just for those people who are making the left turns. With that, we expect to have certain reductions of crashes. Sometimes the reductions, if we're very lucky, is about 10% of total crashes. If we, someone can tell me that we can reduce the possibility of a fatality by 90%, I'll buy. Just the cost that we're going to save as a society for reducing those crashes is going to pay more benefit for that. 2002, Maryland, 15 intersections, very similar numbers in terms of the type of crashes and the reduction that exists. Vehicle delays, Kansas, Kansas State University is one of the organizations in the country that is leading and is pushing roundabouts in this country. They did this study in 2011, intersections in Kansas, the average delay is 65 seconds, and 65%, and the number of stops is 52%. What does that mean? When you go down, when we go home today, for all of us who live in Providence or north of that, every time that we go to a signal, if the signal is broken, we have to wait there. Instead of going home and enjoying time with the Hamilas, we're going to spend 20 seconds, 25 seconds at every signal, wasting time, or even worse, producing vehicle emissions, pollution. Pollution on one end, but also fuel that we're wasting on the other hand. 10 intersections in Virginia, a study done in 2005, just by converting these 10 intersections to a roundabout, they were able to save, estimate a saving of 200,000 gallons of fuel per year. Calculate that at the current price of $3.60. They are really good, and they're really good even in tourist areas where people are not familiar with them, where you are going to have always a population that is moving, is changing all the time. Even Colorado, really good destination for skiing. I don't ski, so I don't know, I haven't been there, but I have seen videos of this location where you even have bicyclists going in this area. This is a five-roundabout corridor, this is an interstate, there's a roundabout in this side, which we cannot see, and then these three, other four. They are excellent solutions. This is another view of the same modern roundabout in Worcester, Massachusetts. Now, all that is happening in the country, what about here? What about in Rhode Island? That's never going to happen here. Well, we already have five on the ground and one that is currently being built in this region. And recently, the state, the department put out this one out to bid. This is a five-roundabout corridor, five-roundabout project, four-roundabout corridor. This is one of the most complicated projects in the roundabout community. Everybody's eyes are going to be in Rhode Island for the next three or four years. If we succeed, we're going to be the example. Whatever we learn from this project is going to be what the rest of the country is going to follow. That project is very, very critical. Centredale, this is not a regular intersection where you have 90-degree right-angle intersection. This is a great location for a roundabout because you don't need to have that right angle. When you have this kind of approach at a skewed angle, at a signalized intersection, you have sometimes to divide, you cannot have these two legs at the same time and these two legs at the same time. Sometimes you have to dedicate one face for these guys, one face for these guys, and then every time you add a pace, you increase the delay, the time that people have to stay there, wasting their time, wasting fuel, creating pollution. Single lane, two-lane roundabout built by the developer when they expanded their facility. First two-lane in Rhode Island, single lane, this is right outside of a school, I'm not sure if it is a middle school or a high school, in West Warwick. Same thing, look at how the angles at that location, if we tried to put a signal, we would be wasting a lot of people's time over there. One set, another two-lane roundabout. This one is so new that when you go to Google Maps, they're, the whole intersection is still showing. It's a single-lane roundabout in Fruit Hill, North Providence, probably within quarter of a mile, half a mile from the first one in Centredale. One of the critical pieces here is that there was a monument here in one of the areas of the intersection. We were able to locate the center of the island in a manner that we did not have to disturb that monument. So they are very flexible. And this is the other project I was telling you about, five-roundabout project, four-roundabout corridor. Warwick, normally when you're coming from 95, you go through this roadway in order to get to a short road. And there is only one-way circulation around this center of town. These projects will allow everybody to drive in a two-way circulation while people who are coming from Route 1, they can actually choose to go in this direction. This is going to remain one-way, but this is going to be a two-way roadway nowadays. Conclusion, they increase the safety, reduce vehicles, they feed all kinds of vehicles, reduce congestion, vehicle emissions, and they enhance aesthetics. We have five, mean five roundabouts in the state. We have one mini roundabout in Providence College Campus in Providence, Rhode Island College, that's right, Rhode Island College in Providence. We have four rotaries that have been retrofitted, minor improvements, sometimes just paint, a little bit of curbing, some signage, and we're improving their operations, but we cannot call them roundabouts, it would be unfair. There is one under construction, five out to be, and there are 32 more that we expect to have in the ground with the next year. So definitely, there are something that is coming, and if you don't want to deal with roundabouts, you probably want to move to, I don't even know, Europe. Europe is full of roundabouts, so I don't know where you want to move if you want to avoid roundabouts. So in specifics to the projects, do you want to take it over?
Yeah, this is our last two slides, but this kind of just shows you an aerial of what we have right now. Obviously, William S. Canning, Stafford and Hurst right here. And this is how the overlay would fit into the roundabout. So as you come down William S. Canning from Massachusetts, the whole idea of the roundabout itself, as Francisco was saying, is to deflect the vehicles, which makes them slow down. As they're approaching the roundabout, they see this green space, they don't see pavement up ahead. So it makes them slow down to a yield, and as you said, the people inside the roundabout have the right-of-way. So as you come in, you stop here, you look for a gap in people coming this way that are going 15 to 25 miles per hour, a lot easier to find a gap as opposed to trying to measure a gap that's with 40, 45 mile an hour speeds on the approaches. On this coming northbound on Stafford Road, you come up here, you'd be allowed to make your right into Hurst Lane, as well as you come up to the roundabout and same thing. You're facing, as you approach, this green area, and the island, the splitter island it's called, deflects you to go to the right of the roundabout, which slows you down to 25 miles an hour until you get around the roundabout. And then same thing coming southbound on Stafford Road. As you approach, you're not facing any more pavement. You got the island here with the green that's going to be in your vision. You slow down, look for your gap within the roundabout, and make this right or continue here or continue up to Hurst. As well as the things that we're looking at at Hurst Lane are, as we mentioned at the beginning, to come out, to prohibit this left out this way and have people come out, go through the roundabout and make the turn to go down Stafford Road. And still allowing, we provide this left-hand storage area to make the left turn into Hurst Lane. So that's what we're looking, what we're proposing. We think it'll be a really big improvement at this intersection from, again, from safety as well as from the congestion slash operations of the intersection itself. As well as, it looks a lot nicer. You get more green space, traffic signals, you know, there are a lot of electrical components that fail. Our electrical people are out there all the time, getting calls in the middle of the night when a signal goes on flash. You don't have any of that here. It's a roundabout, it's probable, you know, there's really a lot of benefits to having these installed at intersections.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure. Actually, yeah.
Coming up from Canning up to Hurst.
Sorry?
Coming up Canning Boulevard.
Yep.
To Hurst.
Yep.
To take a left-hand turn.
Yep.
What did?
I'm sorry.
Okay, to take a left-hand onto Hurst.
Yep.
Okay, what's the advantage? Because you still have the traffic coming from Stafford.
Yeah, what you have here is, that you don't have now, actually, let me go back one, is when you're making this left right now, the people that are coming southbound with you, you're in the travel lane. So you got people coming up, as you're looking for the gap of people coming up Stafford to head towards Massachusetts or even to continue on Stafford, you're standing right here with people coming up behind you, hopefully.
I live off Hurst Lane, so that's what I'm asking.
I'm sorry?
I said, I live off Hurst, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, no, now, if you, so what you will have now is a protected area as you wait. So the through traffic will go to your right by design.
Okay.
So you'll have this, it's about, it's enough, there's not a lot of, as you know, it's a dead end, so there's not a lot of traffic that goes there, but there's enough storage here for two left-turning vehicles. And again, the people that are coming north on Stafford, while there's nothing impeding them specifically at this point, 100 foot feet away is a roundabout where they know they can't go more than 25 miles.
Okay, I'll just give you a little, there is a lot of traffic that makes that left-hand turn there. There are more than 200 homes at the bottom.
I mean comparatively. If you look at the intersection as a whole.
I make it every day.
Yeah. Only once, too, I'm sure.
It's not an easy place to cross.
And we can take a look at those volumes as well to see if we can put another left-turn vehicle into this area as well, or if we can do, this island, this like off magenta, I don't know my colors, but the inside of the roundabout there is actually something that's malleable as well. So there's certain things that we could do on this approach island if we're not getting the capacity for that left turn. But you'll find that left turn into Hurst now would be a lot easier than it is under the present condition. Before that, the cars know they're approaching a roundabout, there'll be advanced signing loading them to that as well. So it's easier to find a gap in slower-moving traffic than in higher-speed traffic.
I'd say it actually eliminates the uncertainty, too, because I tried pulling into Hurst and pulling out, and the people coming at you going north, you don't know whether they're going right or left.
Yeah, exactly.
So they don't have an option here, like you know they're coming at you, you don't have to find a gap, are they going straight onto Stafford or turning left onto William S. Canning? So that's like another benefit that we see from this.
Making this right out, yep.
I'm not an engineer. I live down Hurst Lane as well. On the corner of Hurst Lane and Stafford Road is a dialysis center.
Okay.
That is very busy during the day, a lot of traffic. In my mind, if you push the circle further south, I think it would be easier.
Yeah, what we looked at, we did look at that as well, what that does, if you can see, by doing this, we stay within our, within the state land. By pushing it further south, your roundabout now ends up going into this area, which would just bring us into more permitting, which isn't, not necessarily something that can't be overcome, but as well as this approach, handling the Stafford Road southbound approach is now offset from the improvements of the roundabout, because they would end up coming in down over here. It would make the Stafford approach more difficult to tie into the roundabout.
Well, I go take that left several times a day as well, and it's scary, so I'm just putting.
Absolutely, and I'm not, again, while the roundabout's not at this location, the effects of it will be felt at this location as people on both approaches. So if you, when you're making this left, the people that are coming up behind you are doing so at 15 to 20, 25 miles an hour, as well as the people approaching you are decelerating down to 15 to 25 miles an hour. So you have the automatic reduction in speed, as well as now you have your storage area to make that left turn.
Crosswalks?
Not that there's a lot of pedestrian kind of activity going on there, but...
Yeah, and as Francisco was saying, that's our final design item that we try to fit into all roundabouts. These, we wouldn't want to cross people from here to here and then here to here. So what we end up doing is using the splitter islands to come in this way to here, as well as to cross over here. And we can, as you can see, but this is conceptually for the layout, that is a final design item that will, as throughout design, we would be communicating with the town as well. We send the plans, looking for comment, typically to the Parks Director, copying the manager and the police chief, or town administrator and the police chief. But yeah, those are things that we do try to incorporate. Complete streets, we try and follow that as well, too. It's not all about cars. We want to account for pedestrians as well.
Was it tougher?
Assuming we go ahead now, we're looking at about one year to go from 30, 90 PSNE and put it up to bid. That's with, you know, we are next to, you know, DEM does require permitting for certain issues. There is a sliver of right-of-way on this corner that we think we can mitigate by area that we don't need on this corner here. If you look in this area, you can see the kind of changes. So there's a couple of things that need to be mitigated. So assuming if everything goes well, we're looking at about a year.
Before construction?
Before construction, yeah. And then I would say probably a construction season, you know, and the good thing... And the good thing is, again, the good thing about roundabouts, too, as you saw with that, the one from Worcester, when you're doing it in a huge area that has room, you can do your staging such that you can build your middle and keep traffic moving around the area you're working on. So again, this intersection itself, just by the nature of the amount of room we have, lends it to allowing for an efficient construction.
If I may ask, so what turn lane that you have that's going to turn into Hurst Lane?
Yep.
If you have more than two or three cars there, it now blocks the lane off from people coming up William Canning.
Right.
I see that every day on the modified rotary that has been fixed in Newport, people go to turn into the U.S. Naval Base, and that's plugged up for hours because of the way that has now been changed.
Okay.
You get the same scenario there, we're going to have traffic there backed up, you know, the same scenario.
Right.
We're in collision.
Yeah. I'm not intimately familiar with the Newport thing. I'm ninety percent sure that there's a lot more traffic making that left, as well as the traffic on the main line is probably heavier as well. But you're right, I mean, the, if there's a stream of traffic coming up this way that makes this difficult, and you do get the one or two stackers, they can end up getting to the point where they might impede the traffic going southbound.
Excuse me, so, yeah, I have a question about Newport. There's a gate guard that won't let the people into that gate, so that blocks the traffic.
And actually, under either scenario, even without a roundabout there, if two or three cars back up to make the turn onto Hurst, it backs up the traffic anyway.
Right.
And you just pray to God the guy behind you isn't doing forty coming up the hill.
That's why, actually, Francisco, there's a lot of our roundabout presentations, I've been around the state with a lot of road diet presentations, and that's, to me, always the best-selling point, is when now you're waiting to make that left, you're not impeding traffic. You know, so if they are texting, you're hoping they stay in their lane. You know, it's, but it is, it's nerve-wracking, and I've had a lot of instances where I've heard of people that have been rear-ended that complain about that, yeah. So the benefit of the stacking lane at any intersection is huge to keep the left turn is out of traffic. I'm sorry?
You said the traffic in the circle of the roundabout has the right-of-way.
Right.
And so is it possible that the traffic coming down Stafford and north would have a yield at that point, and so let these cars go down Hurst first?
Well, you wouldn't want to do that. You don't, you, same thing with signalized intersections, you want to give the least amount of control to the approach that has the most traffic. Because every time, what, as Francisco said, this is going to eliminate crashes. There'll still be crashes here, but there'll probably be rear-end crashes. And again, that's kind of the human nature of, there's no intersection that has private drivers through it all the time, that if you were to make these people yield, what you'll end up getting is people crashing this area, because it's not readily perceived that there's a reason to be yielding on the main line as opposed to a side-street yielding, have a stop.
I own a little business to your east.
East.
I noticed you cut my driveway off, up left.
Oh, this one?
Yep.
Yeah, we're going to be talking to you. We're going to give you access.
Mark, we're going to put a flyer over for you.
A flyer. No, that is a part of the design, that is, we expected this comment, this.
Just covering zoning, I cut that into two commercial lots.
Yeah.
And now, by you doing that, you shot on my road frontage, so now I probably only get one current lot, and then I'd have to do that right away and pay more taxes. To achieve that, so now I'm losing my entry, so I'm just kind of, and I love the idea of having some sort of roundabout, because I watch a lot of people walking down the road the wrong way, you know, turning up into the traffic. I'm surprised nobody's been killed yet.
Yeah.
And I think part of the help is with the speeds as well.
Right.
Which I'm surprised is that, I thought the speeds were going to be higher, that we've got to get found it. And I'm sure at one peak, the speeds might be higher than what we recorded in the middle of the day.
Right. But you're right, yeah, it's, and as I said, we knew this, a couple of final design issues that, you know, this is a conceptual plan. We knew we, you know, we'd have an access here as well as an access here, that we would have to work out this frontage.
Right. Was the best alternative.
Should I get fit into our roundabout design? So we do realize that, and the issue with this area, too, getting the buy-in of what we're looking to do at Hurst, and we really want to nail down.
I have just a couple of points of concerns in my head.
Yeah.
Looking at the southbound side of Stafford Road coming up to the yield.
Yep.
On the other side?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, coming into that yield there.
Yep.
So if the space, I'm just kind of trying to put it to scale.
Sure.
The space for the left-hand turn into Hurst, those two cars.
Yep.
I'm going to assume that the yield out to that turn is about four cars, five cars deep.
About four or five, yeah.
I think in peak traffic, I was thinking might back up farther than that.
Okay.
So then you left turn will now be impeded, I would imagine. And then I'm going to back up the, I guess, the southbound side of Canning.
Well, the interesting thing that happens with that is the law analysis, it didn't back up as far as Hurst. And the reason for that is, if you look at, when these people get up here, there's not a lot of conflicts. Most of the people that are coming down here are heading.
Yeah.
So when these people are sitting at this yield bar, yield area right here, they're going to recognize the people are heading this way, and they're going to have plenty of gaps to get into the roundabout heading northbound in this direction.
You mentioned before, people don't use the signals now.
Yeah.
And habits are tough to break.
Right.
So in the beginning, I think that's going to be.
Any, you know, if I would tell you, too, the one we did at Twin River, and that was like the first roundabout that we really had, it was the first double roundabout we had, there was a lot of confusion at that time. The Twin River was great about supplying details and getting it, because they didn't want a blemish right in front of their big development. And once people get used to how you operate in them, it's been amazing as far as how efficient it is. You never, I've been there a couple of times, maybe not in the peaks, but I never see it back up, or no matter which direction you're going in, the traffic flows very smoothly. But you're right, the first couple of weeks, we'll have the chief's people out here helping us try and keep people, and it's kind of a learning curve for us. As Francisco said, we have five on the ground now, so we have learned lessons of, you know, how to communicate it to drivers and what to expect. And the drivers of Rhode Island and New England are becoming more and more used to them, as, you know, prevalent as they are in Europe. We're eventually going to get to that point, too, where it won't be as confusing if a new one pops up in our community, but that is an actual concern.
Yeah, the reason why I bring it up is when Brad reached out to me in construction, there was accident after accident after accident, because people were so used to just zipping right over that thing.
Right.
And then it was slowed down to the speed it was, and it was accident after accident.
Yeah.
I'm sure the police chief had to fight you for it, even though it's not.
For the last eleven years, you mean?
Yeah. It was just a change in that pattern.
Right.
Caused a lot of.
Yeah, and was, you know, we try our best throughout design, putting things on the contractor, and trying to make the transition as smooth as possible. But you're right, there's going to be confusion. It's inevitable that that's going to happen. But we do try to, I mean, the more people that go through it and follow the car through that's doing it correctly, you know, you can get it. The ultimate goal is, once everyone's used to it, the improvements are there.
A pace car.
Yeah, exactly, right.
I'm sorry, Steve.
Yeah, good.
I'll read that before. Yep, we had a technical review committee meeting with Regard about this, and I think the roundabout is in the complete wrong place. I think it has to be moved. So I'm going to tell this woman, say, it has to be moved up to Hurst Lane, where Hurst Lane and Stafford intersecting. It doesn't even look right. Just look at it. It hasn't eliminated the danger of taking a left-hand turn into Hurst Lane, and that's the whole reason to put it there. And it's in the wrong place. I designed one on Matas Vineyard. It took ten years, but finally got constructed. It's the only one on the island. It works tremendously. So I'm really in favor of them, but this is not a good design.
Excuse me, you talked about committing that land there, but you'd have to take some. I believe some of it is state land, because every spring I have to call when I have to cut the grass, because as I'm coming up, I can't see down Stafford Road to take the left onto Hurst Lane.
Yeah, no, the issue's not so much us owning it. You're right, I mean, that is state land. The issue is taking wooded area and turning it into pavement is the area that gets you into permitting issues. But you're right, I mean, you know, anyone can look at, you know, any intersection and come up with what they think is the best design. Our concern is to try and mitigate as much as we can at Hurst by getting the full benefits of the roundabout. By putting this here, your deflection angle's just not as good at Hurst Lane that you can get over here, and it doesn't address the issue of Stafford. Stafford would end up coming in at this area, and you'd have an intersection with more traffic just north of an intersection of the roundabout, which is why we feel that this is the preferred alternative.
Steve, also, the volumes that we have on Stafford compared to Hurst, there are four times more cars on Hurst than on, I mean, tougher than Hurst.
Right.
So that ideal location for the circle, it would be where the most volumes you add.
Right.
But Stafford heading north, you just, I gave you the design, that traffic wouldn't enter the roundabout if you moved it up to Hurst. That traffic would stay and hook back, going south, just like they have it. So it's not going to enter, it's not going to enter the roundabout. And I gave you the design, did you bring the design?
No, no.
Excuse me, I've been involved with this for ten years before Dave Webb's, that's how long this has been on the board. I disagree with Steve. I think it's a good place. The location where you're missing the point, when you're coming up that turn, you're slowing the traffic down, that's our concern. The left turn to Hurst, I don't think is going to be a problem if you get that traffic slowed down. And that's where we have, we have, the geography of the area is uphill, people are accelerating, they're coming off a highway, and I think the primary concern there is the speed. If you reduce the speed approaching that by now and then into the rotary, then I think you're going to accomplish what you're trying to do, particularly with that left turn.
Okay. The only other issue, because I drive that every single day, is your sight line coming up. Right now, because you are further to the right side, because you've got that new green space there.
Yeah.
On this, on the, coming up from Canning up towards, right, right in there. Right now, your line of sight, where there's no grass, you can see the traffic coming, if it's not coming too fast.
Yeah.
Now you're forcing the car to go out a little further, so you're going to miss that sight line of the other cars coming that way when you, before you get to make that left-hand turn.
I'm sorry, this left turn?
Yes.
Into Hurst?
Right now, because you're further to the right coming up that hill, you're looking almost over the top of the hill, and you can see the traffic coming.
Yeah.
On Stafford.
Okay.
If the grass has come. But if you move over more to the left, as you would because of the roundabout.
Yep.
Okay, you're not going to be able to see that sight line further down, that we can see now.
Or from here to here?
Yeah.
This is, is this the grass here? Because this doesn't, this wouldn't be grass right here, this would be concrete island.
No, 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 what I'm saying, by forcing the cars to go a little more left from the bottom, where you have the new green space.
Yep.
Okay.
Heading toward the roundabout.
Heading toward the roundabout.
Yep.
So you're going to be not in the same line sight to the top of that hill.
Okay.
Flip back and forth between the two. Flip back and forth between the two. Put your laser on the spot.
So, yeah, so as you're making this left.
Right, so as you're coming up to the top of the hill.
Yeah.
See, your line of sight goes right to the top of the hill all the way through.
Right.
Now, force the cars over a little more.
Yep.
Okay, you're actually, your mound sight line is to the corner, a little beyond the corner of the beginning of Hurst Lane.
Yeah.
So you're going to miss the traffic coming towards you. I mean, though, suppose you're going to be going slower, you have to watch it, but I'll tell you, driving that every day, I mean, we take our lives in our hands making that left-hand turn because of how quickly the traffic is coming the other way. So you have to rely on visual.
Right.
To make sure, because when you get up, because by the time you get up there, again, because they don't use their indicators, you don't know if they're going straight onto Stafford or going onto Canning.
Right.
So you have to look and see if there are cars coming.
Right, and, but now it'll be, there's no, these people here that are coming north on Stafford now, they're, they don't have that option of Stafford or Canning at this point. At this point, they're all in one lane, and then up here is where they make the decision to continue up Stafford or back down.
Right, but by the time they get to there, until they're accustomed to it, they're still going to be coming to that intersection at forty miles an hour.
Right. Which is why all of this today, I mean, so this will improve, like I said, the first day, you know, if people are, if people are heading into this at forty miles per hour, as Francisco was saying, you're going to have to turn ends here, because they can't get through here at forty miles an hour. So they're going to have to jam on their brakes as they approach the roundabout. But that's why, you know, when we do first do it, in addition to the static signs we have, we'll have variable message signs as well, new traffic pattern, roundabout, whatever the appropriate warning is, but, you know, it won't take long for people to realize, I mean, it'd be similar to a signal. But if you had a signal here, yeah, when it's green, you're not going to get much effect with slowing down traffic, which is why I think a signal's not a good alternative here, because people are going to be used to it being a signal. But this is, the roundabout's always here, so they can't, they can't get used to going through here at forty or never hitting the signal. If they go through one to forty, they're uncomfortably slowing down as they approach this intersection, and they're going to have to slow down.
And your data model, was it all average-sized vehicles, or did you mix in buses?
No, yeah, this is, as Francisco said, designed for WB sixty-seven, which is a sixty-seven-foot trailer.
So you're doing traffic flow.
I'm sorry?
When you're analyzing traffic flow, you said you did a study on, you ran a simulation on traffic flows ago.
Oh, you took traffic count, right.
Same percentage, the same percentage of trucks that are out there today.
Okay.
Use the same ones, and then we projected that into the future, the twenty years into the future, so we increase the volumes.
Excuse me, does your traffic count take into account the time of day?
Yes. Yeah, we counted seven different hours throughout the day.
The rush hour.
Yep. And the seasonal adjustment.
Is what we designed for, yeah. So that's the, and that's for any design, for traffic signal, roundabout, any intersection design, we take the peak hour counts, and that's what we go by, because that is the worst time that you're going to experience traffic. Sir?
Are you going to bury the utility lines in that area?
That we have, that would be a monumental cost. If, that's something, why that doesn't get into just for the cost value of it, unless they, you know, so any utility line relocated would be accommodated in our way of way.
Well, you eliminate those poles, you know, improve their safety.
True, but it's, you know, ideally, it'd be nice to have all the utilities underground and, you know, and.
I'm not saying the whole road, just that roundabout area.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, I'm sure that's something that is, in this time of fiscal constraints, those, yeah, those costs would be just, they'd outweigh the actual improvements we'd be making with the actual design of the roundabout.
I mean, I still go back to, the reason we want a roundabout is to eliminate T-bone ninety-degree accidents, and you're not doing that. You're still leaving Hurst Lane subject to a T-bone accident, because the people heading north on Stafford, as you approach, you don't really slow down. You don't slow down till you get there, normally when you're driving. So you're going to have T-bone accidents coming and going out of Hurst Lane with this design. You haven't eliminated anything.
I think we've eliminated a lot of things. Is this, is this a hundred percent going to make everything go away? I don't, that's, that's not the case. But I think this is an alternative that accommodates the heaviest amount of traffic on this approach and has the best alternative for the roundabout design. Yeah, I mean, you can make any, any sort of roundabout, you know, fit into an area if that is the goal. Our goal is to try and stay within our constraints, as well as addressing the most pressing issues and the highest volumes.
I think, I think safety is more important than volume.
Absolutely.
I think you took the design and made it fit into an existing layout that happens to be, to be honest with you. You have the pavement, so it was nice to slide, you don't have to build out the road, but the roundabout belongs to Hurst Lane to eliminate, to eliminate the real traffic issues at that intersection. It's Hurst Lane, and our chairman lives there, believe me, and it's a dangerous intersection you're not eliminating.
I disagree.
Let's just talk about a couple, can we go back one slide?
This, the volume of left turns, the volume of left turns out of here, you have fifty-one during the peak hour, you have fifteen out of Hurst. Fifty-one versus fifteen possibilities of having T-bones.
Excuse me, I beg to differ with that, because I can tell you, there are times there are more than fifteen cars coming out of Hurst Lane because they can't get out.
That's true.
And a lot of people cut through Lee and, I can't think of any other street, to Adam, to go over because they don't even deal with the top of Hurst Lane.
And those lefts, actually, the lefts out won't even be allowed anyway, they'll be coming out and going through the roundabout.
Which, I'm going to tell you right now, is going to cause an issue. You've got more than two hundred-plus homes down there, and Saturday at three-thirty, when they're heading to Mass, they all want to take a left here and there. I'm just letting you know, the traffic pattern out of Hurst Lane, I would say seventy-five percent are going to want to take a left-hand turn out of that, out of Hurst Lane.
Okay. Well, I think the, by prohibiting the left is an issue that will, you know, it reduces everything to a right, a right turn and a merge as opposed to a cross. But, you know, that'd be something we could look at if you wanted to maintain that left out, because similar to the left-in, it's done with a slower traffic coming up Stafford Road.
So if we wanted to see revised designs as a process for that, just to try to take some of the feedback and move this along?
Yeah, we could, we could show you different alternatives and bring them back to the council, and you can take a look at them, and, you know, we'll add a cost out, we'll give you a whole shirang of what the two differences are.
I think that would probably.
Yeah, that would work.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. You talk about, sorry, I'm speaking. Talk about striping and road, kind of, I don't know what the terminology is, but I'm thinking of a sort of highly intensive striping, and I worked in the city of Boston where the South End and all the way up to downtown now is, it's a painted roadway system. If you're in a burgundy lane, you know you're in a bus lane, you know, if you're in a green lane, you know you're in the bike lane. They paint the whole road surface, many of the thoroughfares, so that you know where you're supposed to be, where you're not supposed to be. It's very easy to understand, and especially for highly, high-traffic intersections, it really puts you on notice of where you are, and I've seen it in other parts of the country as well. I don't see that a lot in Rhode Island, and I'm wondering if that's something that this design contemplates or any of the designs of ride-on in the future to kind of create a, it also puts you on notice that you need to probably slow down so you understand where you are and why you're in a yellow lane or a green lane or a red lane, or why something's painted underneath your car.
Yeah, I think those are appropriate in cities. We do, we're trying to accommodate bus lanes or bike lanes, and that does make sense. It does help you realize that you're in an area that you shouldn't be in if it is a bike lane, as opposed to just having the bike marking in there as well or in the signs. For this, I think in Rhode Island, we haven't gotten into that as far as dedicating lanes. What we have done in certain areas is different, if you think through Barrington, or different areas, they have the left, center-left turn lane, a different texture. Those are things that Rhode Island has done for, on a corridor-wide basis. I don't think we've done anything that has been specific to an intersection. And the thing that, you know, ends up being problematic is the maintenance of those once, you know.
Yeah.
The color can fade or anything to that.
You know, I've also seen them in areas where there's a crosswalk over a large spans of straight, you know, thoroughfare in smaller communities where, but it is, you know, it wears off after a while and a substantial.
And actually, the State Traffic Commission has started to allow, to allow those as well. One was in Lincoln outside a post office where we gave them permission, our statewide striping program can't handle those types of changes. What we have done is gone ahead and given the town, if the town was looking to paint the middle of a crosswalk a different color, that we would grant them permission to do so, and then they would maintain it. We would still maintain the white lines on the edge, which is what delineates the crosswalk, but the, the middle of it, and Lincoln has kept it up to there, and it looks sharp, to be honest, as you're, as you're on that road. So that's something if the town wanted.
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily thinking about this, we have other areas in town where it sort of comes to mind, and we've had this conversation before about striping, and just wanted to know a little bit more about it. Thanks very much.
Yeah.
I have one more question. Is it possible to have, when you're in the roundabout heading south, you want to make a left-hand turn to Hurst, so if you get back into the roundabout with your pointer, you see that cross, the green spot, the green space and the crosswalk there?
Oh, here, yep.
Could you have a lane on the roundabout to that green space and then make a left-hand turn to Hurst?
Well, what you'd end up doing there is.
Traffic no matter what.
You'd end up moving the roundabout.
No, no, the roundabout stays where it's at, but you make a lane to that green space.
Right, what the, what the issue is, is you want to have the deflection, so as you're heading north on Stafford Road, you want to deflect.
Yeah, because they'd be coming at full speed.
Well, affecting the north traffic if you're further north of the north traffic lane.
Then how do you make a right out of Hurst Lane?
You wouldn't.
He's talking about having a lane come back through here and go back.
Oh, this?
This is too, too sharp of an angle, you can't really make this U-turn, like, you couldn't come through, then you'd have people coming towards the people.
And then you gotta work on the north side and just slow down the traffic on Stafford Road besides this roundabout, you gotta put some type of safety factor or whatever.
Yeah, they're going to give us some alternatives.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
Thanks. Okay, the town council sitting is a board of licensing, non-advertised licensing, Gina Cameron, St. Teresa's Parish. This is Cameron.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I agree with you that three-quarters of our parishioners at four o'clock mass come from Hurst Lane.
Yes.
But anyway, good evening, everyone, and I'm here to seek a liquor license for our church feast, which is August first, second, and third this year, Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday, and we're just looking for consideration.
Okay.
As in the past.
Okay, anything from the council? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the class F liquor license for St. Teresa's annual feast located at two sixty-five Stafford Road with the three dates and times listed.
Second.
Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
And we hope you all come.
Yeah.
And I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Robert Vital, doing business as East Coast Wholesale, requests approval of holiday license at fifteen sixty Bogomash Road, Route one seventy-seven Flea Market, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
I don't think Mr. Vital is here, he was here at the last meeting to get a permit, and we, he needed a holiday one as well, so we said we would put it on.
Okay.
I move that we approve, I'm sorry, I move that we approve the holiday license for Robert Vital or Vital, doing business as East Coast Wholesale, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mario Ardent, doing business as Pools and Spa Incorporated, requests approval of holiday license at two forty-five Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Mr. Ardent?
Good evening, Town Council, I'm not Mr. Ardent, he had something that came up, but I'm representing Innovative Pools and Spas.
And your name is?
My name is Douglas Finglis, and we're just looking to be open on holidays.
Anything from the council? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the holiday license for Mario Ardent, doing business as Pool and Spa Incorporated at two forty-five Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I make one small correction? It's two ninety-five Main Road? I hope that doesn't make a difference in the vote.
We got to pull it all back.
Oh, it says, it says two ninety-five on here.
Okay.
We'll correct the.
Let the record show them.
Let the record show them.
Two ninety-five.
Correction to the, to the agenda to read two ninety-five Main Road.
Good catch, though. Thank you.
Okay, Dimitri Costa, JLC Construction, seven sixty-five State Road, Dartmouth, Mass, requests approval of late renewal of street excavator license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Good evening again. This particular contractor had a license in, a street excavator's type of license in Taunton for seven years and in Somerset for ten. We checked with the, the town highway department, they have excellent references in both cases, so we're recommending the issuance of the license.
Okay, anything from the council?
I just have a question, doesn't relate to, actually, this excavator, but who's the excavator that did work on Leepers Road last year for the water mains?
You mean the paving?
Who did the water lines and?
That was done by the water department, I'm not sure that.
But needed a license to dig up stuff there, right?
They would need a license, yeah, I think it was Joe Farrier.
All right, I just, I just don't remember who that, who that was.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was Joe Farrier.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve a late renewal of the street excavator's license for Dimitri Costa, JLC Construction, meaning, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor. Motion carries.
The term's going to be today till then, right? Not retroactive.
From now until the fourteenth of December, December, November thirtieth, twenty-fourteen. Okay, Jeffrey Hickey, JH Landscaping Construction, eleven oh-two Shoplot Road, Swansea, Mass, requests approval of street excavator license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Very similar case, we have a contractor with experience, we've checked his references and everything checks out.
Okay, ending from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the street excavator license, new application for Jeffrey Hicks, J and H Landscaping Construction, Shoplot Road in Swansea, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, appointments and resignations. Appointment to the Recreation Commission, a vacancy, a three-year term to expire four fifteen twenty seventeen. Susan Gill, thirteen ninety-two Main Road, Ms. Gill?
Hi, Susan.
Hi, yeah. The audience out there in TV land does not have the luxury of having this in front of them, so if you could tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, my name's Susan Gill, I lived in Tiverton for fourteen years, I'm married, we have four adult children who are out of the house.
Yay.
Quasi-adults. I guess my education and my first career was in nursing, I did mostly critical care nursing. My next career was child rearing, and my third career was, I owned and operated a business in Providence for six years. Since then, I, about a year ago, I applied to the Economic Development Commission, which I've been working on, I've enjoyed the work, I've learned a lot about the town, and also the last year I've been going to the recreation, park, the recreation meetings, and they have a lot of work, there's a lot of responsibility and a lot of work involved with all the fields and the beaches, and about a month ago, I just felt like it was time to step up and get to take a more active role in participating, so.
Good, good, anything from the council?
Yeah, there isn't an issue with serving on Mother One Board, is there?
Only if you're a town councillor or on the budget committee.
Budget committee, all right, I didn't know, okay, just want to make sure.
Oh, you can't do this. No conflict.
No, I think if you are able to replicate the great work that you've done on the Economic Development Commission here, you know, the town and the citizens will be better off for it, so thanks for stepping up.
Anything else from the council? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Susan Gill to the Recreation Commission for a three-year term set to expire on April fifteenth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Appointment to the zoning board of review, second alternate, annual appointment expiring seven fifteen fifteen, Alan J. Doucette, ninety-five South Avenue. Alan here?
Nope.
Anything from the council? Any seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we appoint Alan Duquette, or is it Doucette?
Doucette.
Doucette, to, as the second alternate to the zoning board of review for an appointment expiring seven fifteen fifteen.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, you will notify him?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, unfinished business, there is nothing, financial business. Town administrator requests council approval of transfer of funds from account ten ten dash six nine five four Town Clerk Advertising to account ten twenty dash six nine five four Town Council Advertising for four thousand dollars. Mr. Project?
Mr. President, we've had very heavy demand on the advertising account for a variety of reasons, for the most part driven by employment, trying to find qualified candidates for various boards, commissions, and most especially, full-time positions here with the town. So the Town Clerk has most generously volunteered four thousand dollars out of her budget to help cover. We have already done transfers from other accounts to cover this up, so it won't run in the red, but I think we're anticipating further demand, so this transfer was required.
That account was one that I had requested for zoning advertising with the comp plan. We're not as far as we thought we would be, however, I have reserved the five thousand dollars in there to advertise for the form base code, that's going to be coming up for public hearing in June, so I have reserved that and the rest of it, but we are way in the red on our regular advertising. I thought it'd be cleaner to just push it over to the council site so we could keep that account clean.
Okay, anything from the council?
No.
Any seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the request to transfer funds from account ten ten dash six nine five four Town Clerk Advertising to account number ten twenty dash six nine five four Town Council Advertising for the amount of four thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, again, town administrator requests council approval of transfer of funds, Police Department, six thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars forty-six cents from account three 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 zero five one zero eight longevity, a thousand from account three 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 zero five one zero nine health and wellness, ten thousand from account three 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 zero seven six one one gasoline, totaling seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-six cents to account number three 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 zero six 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 seven operations to purchase new computers.
Mr. President, the only edit I would make is that phrase "to purchase new computers" sounds discretionary, and it is not. It's just to replace obsolescent computers that were putting the police department at some risk. I'll let the chief speak to the merits, but basically, Microsoft is no longer servicing certain operating systems, and that requires a change. And of course, not all the hardware, not all the hardware is able to be upgraded to the next level.
On March nineteenth of this year, I was notified by the Royal State Police that they were mandating that we change our computer systems from the two thousand and three models for security reasons, because of people violating the computers and holding different departments ransom for information, and they would no longer share information with us, and also that the FBI would also not give us patched information pertaining to criminal information. So I would like to request permission to either go by the state bid list or advertise to, to purchase new computers. And I did look into different vendors locally to see if these could be upgraded, they've been, over the years since. They've been, over the years since 2003, they have been upgraded, kept pace. But what's happened is now they're just to the point where if we swung good money after bad, if you will. If we upgrade them, they won't take care of our future needs. It should take care of us for a few years to come and be helped.
And we can spare that from longevity, because that's contractual, but we did have...
Longevity for the people who left, like the wellness, is not applicable. It's just not going to be used this year because people have left, so we're not digging anything out of contractual obligations.
Okay.
Gasoline, we've used less gasoline.
We've had some winning in there, and that's where we're using the $10,000 from. I just do anticipate, and I spoke with Mr. Balucci about that, with the new gasoline system, and I've also spoken with the treasurer, and I actually feel that because we're now monitoring this much more closely, that we will experience some savings in that area as well for the future because we are monitoring more closely with the new electric metering system.
Good. Anything else from the council?
Just make sure you get Windows 7 and not Windows 8.
Okay. We'll leave that to the techie people to get.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the transfer of funds totaling $17,628.46 from the three aforementioned accounts to operations, to purchase replacement computers. That's it?
Second.
We have a motion second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Stay right up there, Chief.
Chief.
Chief. Okay, under new business, Police Chief Blakey requests approval of resolution for Tiverton Police Mutual Aid Agreements with four abutting communities, Little Compton, Rhode Island, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, the City of Fall River, Mass., and the Town of Westport, Mass.
As you know, we're in the process of accreditation, we're seeking accreditation for the local police department. One of the state laws requires, and accreditation requires, that we renew our contracts every three years. Those are for Rhode Island communities. So that's what I'm trying to do with the Rhode Island communities, and so I'm going to upgrade them all for accreditation purposes with the contiguous Massachusetts communities as well. And I would also seek permission to obtain the approval of the required signatures from those communities to validate these mutual aid packs.
Okay.
They have to be signed and agreed upon by all communities before they become valid.
Anything from the council?
We actually need four different resolutions.
Yes, I was off last week, but I did tell the chief that I'm going to have to look at them and just update the dates on them, but the wording on them is fine.
Everything is, nothing's changing.
Nothing's changing but the date, so we'll get a better date on them and have the appropriate person sign them.
We'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the Tiverton Police Mutual Aid Agreements with Little Compton, Portsmouth, Fall River, Massachusetts, and Westport, Massachusetts, with the aforementioned date changes.
Second. We have a motion second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Board of canvases, Councilor Shabbat requests approval of resolution supporting General Assembly bills relating to eliminating the option of the single-party master lever voting in non-primary elections.
This is also being requested by the Board of Canvassers. Again, this master lever resolution we approved last year, had different, obviously different bill numbers, but again, it's the same issue. The master lever is basically outlived its usefulness, and our town council, school committee, and budget committee are all nonpartisan elections, and if the voter only mocks the straight party vote, then basically we get no votes. It's an undervote. So I put together the resolution and request that the council approve and forward this to the governor, Senate President Teresa Piverweed, the House Speaker Nicholas Matiello, and all the other cities and town governments in Rhode Island in order to support the elimination of the master lever.
Okay. As council has agreed to this previously, and I think it's a good move, so I will entertain a motion regarding this resolution.
I move that we approve the resolution.
Nope, we'll wait for a second. I just, the question I have is, what is the, two questions. What is the holdup at the state level? And second question is...
You don't really want to answer that here in open session, do you?
It's all right for open session.
Yeah, no, no.
It's sheer political corruption, that's what.
Oh, okay. Hey, you don't have to tell me, I'm a member of the Democratic Party.
I'm not over that far. No, it's a whole river from the days when, especially in Pothottin, Pothottin.
But it's 2014. Is there any other, you know, arrows in our quiver, as it were, to kind of push this anymore, or is this what we can do?
As a town council, this is what we can do.
The only other thing is to attend the hearings and testify, which I did testify at the Senate hearing on the master lever, and I believe the House is having their hearing tomorrow.
Okay.
So I did represent the Tiverton Town Council at the Senate hearing.
Yeah. Invite our legislators in again. Okay, we have a motion second, any further discussion? No. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Barbara Hadad, Tiverton Garden Club, request approval for Cleanup Week banners on town property to be placed on fence at Bugamash Park and Town Farm Garden Area, they're six feet by 28 inches. Is Barbara Hadad here?
No, Mr. President, she wasn't able to make it. I can tell you that she did bring the banners in, and she'll be from the building official, measured them, made sure they were the right size, so they meet that, but she wants to put them on town property. I guess where she used to have them, on the corner of Susa Road or something, it's kind of dug up around there and whatnot, and so they're asking to put them on Bugamash Field. She's a little behind in getting this here, I'm not sure.
Yes, it is Saturday. I will entertain a motion.
I move we grant permission to hang banners for Cleanup Week for the week of May 3rd through the 10th on Town Farm Garden Area, wherever that is, and the fence on Bugamash Park.
Second.
We have a motion second, any discussion?
And I would remind people that next week is Tiverton Cleanup Week, and...
Cleanup?
Cleanup, and Saturday is the kickoff ceremony.
We have a motion second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bids and requests for proposals. DPW Director Steve Balucci requests to advertise for price proposals for consultant engineering services for landfill operations.
Again, every three years, someone, either myself or previously come up before you, where the contract for our environmental consultant for the landfill comes up, this contract ends this June 30th, so we have to go out to bids for, request for proposals again for their services. So that's what this is for.
Do we have any reason to believe that we will get alternate bids than what we have in the past? Because we've gone through the same engineer, right?
No, we've had more than one response.
Have we?
Yep, yep. We've had, I think, three or four or five responses last year, yep.
Shows where I was.
And I think this may be the last round, maybe this last three years will probably get us to the end of the landfill, so it's an important one.
I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the request to advertise for price proposals for the consultant engineering services for the landfill operations.
Second.
We have a motion second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Steve. Town administrator, authorization to award contract for audit services to Hague Shahadi and Company, PC, 126 President Avenue, Fall River, Mass. for $43,000. Mr. Wojciech?
Mr. President, the town went out to bid for audit services for a one-year contract with the option to renew each year for up to three years. We had six respondents. All were very professionally done, so this competition was one where very small mistakes or very small differences made a significant difference in the score that was awarded to each audit firm. The state auditor general had a formula, a certain number of points were to be awarded for different things, qualifications, timeframe, and price. Price was 20 points out of 100. As it turns out, the lowest bidder was also the highest score, so Hague Shahadi came in at 95 points out of a possible 100. And thus, that is my recommendation both to the town council and the school committee, that that firm be awarded this contract.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the contract with Hague Shahadi and Company, PC, for one year with an option for two more. But I have a question.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second, discussion?
Option for two more years.
Yeah.
I thought you said three.
Three total, right?
Three total.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah. The $43,000 successful bid price, oh, I'm sorry, wait. Yeah, I'm sorry. How does that compare to what we currently have been paying for the last three years with our existing auditor?
I'm looking to the treasurer because I'm not sure what we've...
Mrs. Surratt?
I know it's well on a budget.
What are we budget, 54?
50.
Forty what?
Two.
Okay, 27. They were 48 and we were 26.
So...
That's 54.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was. So we're...
Well below.
Well below.
Yeah. She's our treasurer.
Sorry, Denise, that was too easy.
I know, we probably budgeted close to that, if not slightly more this year, so...
Probably budgeted three, but I could be wrong. 26.
Either way, either way, we're doing...
And 26 and 20.
Good. And some of these names look new, so that's exciting, too. Portland name.
Anything else from the council?
Yep.
Seeing none? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, town administrator, items and announcements.
Just a couple of quick announcements, I'm not going to, well, I suppose I will steal your thunder. The town cleanup is scheduled to start this Saturday, May 3rd, at Grinnell's Beach at 9:00 a.m., but it is a weekly, it's a week-long event, if I understand the town cleanup correctly. So, as many people as want to be supportive, get there at the start, stay if you can. Another announcement I have is, this is a general matter, the state of Rhode Island is engaged in the roadmap, building a Better Rhode Island process, which is, it's well above and beyond economic development. It's the overall master plan for the state with numerous principles and objectives that they're trying to reach, equity as well as development. And they have, from time to time, these open house and group discussion sessions all around the state. The closest one, and the most current, would be Thursday, May 8th, at St. Lucy's Parish Center on West Main Road in Middletown. There are several other events, Providence, Central Falls, Warwick, Unsocket, and North Kingston, so I'll post the schedule on the town's website. But for those who are interested in having a voice in the direction that the state is taking, virtually every issue is on the table, and they are discussed in great length, and regular folks' input is very, very welcome. So I've been to many of these and sat in the back and watched the crowd, as it were, because I've never been to one of these with fewer than 60 or 70 people, engage the consultants who are working on this project very closely. So if you want to have a voice in the process, that's where you can plug in. Those are the only announcements I have.
You have a request from Talia Policelli?
Pollicelli.
Pollicelli.
I think. She's the Director of Legislation for the General Treasurer and has asked that the town council support a resolution for the reauthorization of funds for this municipal road and bridge revolving fund. You may recall that the General Treasurer established this fund, and I'm going to look to Steve, I think it's $7 million is in it right now. It's being administered by the Clean Water Finance Agency, so that's Bill Squino's group, and has gone through one round of funding. I fully anticipate that at some point in the future, we may need this fund, and it's not a bad idea for the state to set aside funds for infrastructure development. So while it's a small fund, it's a good step in the right direction, so I would ask for your support.
I will entertain a motion regarding a resolution, Resolution Number 2014-5 for the Municipal Road and Bridge Revolving Fund.
I will move that we approve the Resolution 2014-5 regarding Municipal Road and Bridge Revolving Fund.
Second.
I have a motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, council announcements, comments, and questions. Councilor Shabbat, comprehensive plan update.
Just a brief update on the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. The second meeting occurred for the Advisory Committee occurred on April 15th. We had a kickoff with the consultant, Ken Buckland, from the Cecil Group. Action items were discussed for the four groups involved in the subgroups that are involved in the Advisory Committee. The next meeting is tentatively scheduled for May 22nd, so that we can bring our to-dos back to the meeting. And we talked about targeting two open house sessions with the public. They're tentatively targeted for June 11th and June 15th, so mid-June timeframe, we want to get public input into the process.
Where will those meetings be, John?
It's tentatively scheduled, we haven't found a location, but most likely at the high school or one of the schools. That's my brief update.
Anything else from any other councilor?
I just have a quick question. I know our next meeting will have an agenda about quarry licensing. I know is, I'm sorry, I remember her name, from the Conservation Commission, Hilton.
Trish.
Trish Hilton, she brought up someone who was a hydrologist who can possibly come down and visit our current quarries. I'm not sure if that's come up at all, conversations, if that's doable.
Between now and the next meeting?
Not even now, but the next meeting, but in general.
So, yes, I've spoken to Trish Hilton about this, have done some research into the firm that she's recommending. There is a possibility we would get a significant discount for a day-long visit tour. What I'd like to do, though, is time that with the ongoing progress of the quarry legislation so that the information garnered is right on the spot and helpful to the council rather than languishing for too long. So I'm going to see what the lay of the land is, so to speak, pun intended, I guess, and see how that goes. But, you know, the individual is very highly recommended, has a tremendous amount of experience in Southern New England, so even though he's from Maine, he's done an awful lot of work in this part of the country, so I have every confidence that it's a good choice. Obviously, we'll comply with looking into alternatives as well.
Anything else from the council?
I just want to remind everybody that we get to see each other again on Thursday for the Financial Town Hearing at the Middle School in the Cafegimitarium, whatever they call it, Cafatorium.
Cafatorium.
Cafagimitarium.
At 7 o'clock. That's it.
Okay, town solicitor.
Doors at 6. Doors at 7. Is there an opening act?
Maybe.
Try to be able.
There could be.
Mr. Chairman, and by the way, Michael or Sillow from my office will be attending that Thursday night. Just to update you on a few things, K1, Fireman's Fund and Supplies Company versus Garrett Themes. This is a lawsuit that was brought, house burned down, Fireman's Fund was the insurer, they paid the claim, they turned around and sued the builder for faulty construction causing, leading to the fire, and the builder turned around and sued the town for... And the builder turned around and sued the town for the town's inspector not having caught his negligence. In any case, this was defended by the inter-local trust, and they have settled the case. The town's contribution is fairly minimal. It's twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, and of that, the town is only paying its usual deductible, which is five thousand. Basically, a judgment call on the trust as to the cost of defending the case versus the cost of settling it. Probably would have cost more than that to go to trial. Next item is K2, just an update on William McGoughlin. This case, as we reported at the last meeting, the judge entered an order, and Mr. McGoughlin wasn't present, and the judge entered an order that the property be moved within ninety days, the offending structure. Mr. McGoughlin has filed a motion for reconsideration. Apparently, orally, I've heard that he says that he thought, that he got the date wrong. But the document that he's filed really doesn't include anything new. It's all of his old arguments about why he thinks everything was wrong to begin with. Nevertheless, that's down for another hearing. That is down this coming Friday afternoon at two o'clock. Could be Friday, May 2nd, I believe, at 2:00 p.m. in Newport for his motion for reconsideration. And item K3, there's no backup, but just to report on Tiverton versus LAL Construction Site Ready. That is heating up again. There is a motion pending in court in two weeks over site readies. Basically, the request for production of documents from the town. We have produced several thousand pages of documents already. We believe, we've produced it through the federal court case. They have the state Superior Court case, but it's the same parties and the same attorney. Our argument is, we've already given you everything, so we'll be going to court to argue that in another two weeks. And then finally, not on the agenda, but just as an announcement, Growth Smart Rhode Island does presentations around the state, workshops, and they're having one of their core land use workshops entitled Conducting Effective Land Use Reviews, and that's Wednesday, May 28th, and it's being held right here in Tiverton Town Hall. This is actually for distribution in your last agenda packet, but I just put it out there for the public, and particularly members of the planning board and the zoning board. And the real fun thing is that actually I will be doing the legal training part of that.
And what time is that?
Seven, it's, I'm sorry, it's 5:30, 5:30 to nine, but it includes a dinner at 5:30. And the best part is, for Tiverton Board members, it's free. Because of our participation, the inter-local trust and multiple pools from the trust, it is free of charge. It's only a whopping thirty dollars for the standard registration, but it's still free for Tiverton Board members, so I'd encourage people to attend. Notwithstanding the fact that it will be me teaching it, I'd still encourage them to attend.
Five twenty-eight, May 28th. Anything else, Mr. Thig?
That's all I have.
Thank you. We do have another council announcement, someone missed their opportunity.
I was just reminded. A lot of citizens have called me or stopped me in the supermarket. They think that the waste collection is a little too late. They feel that we need another one in April, and I know it's too late now, but maybe next year we could consider it to do one. Mid-April, they're suggesting, because a lot of people already had a lot of branches and things that they needed to dispose of. And as I was looking at this, maybe, Steve, the August one, we could take out. Yeah, because May's all right, June, September, but maybe the August one, we could make an April one. But a lot of people have stopped me on this. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy, for reminding me.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Okay, Brett has mentioned that the Financial Town Hearing is at the Tiverton Middle School on Thursday. I encourage everyone to go. It is a chance, your last chance, to hear the Budget Committee, the Town Council, Mr. Katz, or whoever is going to represent the electors petition, to be able to hear their presentations one more time, but more importantly, to be able to ask questions on whatever part of the budget you want to ask. Questions for the course of school committee will also be represented there. So it is important, it doesn't change the ballot, the ballot is set. It doesn't change it, but it does give your input as far as, maybe it's something to look for for the future, or at least gets your feelings out there. So I do encourage everyone to go there. We are supposed to have the copy of the ballot. I am waiting for the state to return it to us, so that the Board of Canvas can certify it. As long as we get anything back from the state, even if it's the draft ballot, I will make copies of it for that evening. We'll also should have copies of the report from the town treasurer, from the town administrator, as well as ample dockets are all printed from the Budget Committee's recommendation, and the clerk's office is now putting together the petitioner's backup and preparation. So we will have all that documentation out there for you. We will also put some at the library after the May 1st hearing. We'll try to put it in other areas of town, so anybody who wants to get a copy can. We are still in the process of accepting absentee ballot applications. So if you are not going to be in the area at that time for the May 20th Financial Town referendum, up until May 5th, you can come and get an application, fill it out. We do have absentee voting on the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday before the FTR. And I don't want to get too much information on the FTR, because I'm getting some phone calls, and they're confusing the hearing with the actual referendum. So I want to make it point clear that on May 1st, this is your opportunity to ask questions, to put input into it. The F, the Financial Town referendum is the all-day election, which actually will happen on May 20th, a Tuesday.
Nancy, will that be televised, that meeting?
Yes, the hearing, yes.
When is the early voting, what were those dates, I'm sorry?
That is on Thursday, the 15th, Friday, the 16th, and Saturday, the 17th, I believe. So it's the Thursday, and that's only at the Town Hall.
Yeah, right.
We are combining the polls, we're using the same polling locations we used last year and the year before, but that will all come out in advertising, and I'll raise it again at our next council meeting. I just think it's a little bit confusing for some people, so I don't want to make it any worse than it is. But certainly, if you're not going to be around on the 20th, you have the opportunity to come the Thursday, the 20th is a Tuesday. If you're not going to be here for that vote, you have the opportunity to come the Thursday, Friday, or Saturday prior to that. And by simply signing that, you may not be here on that day, you're given a ballot, and you're able to vote. Put it into the eagle, everything stays secured. But if you are going to be away that whole time, and we have had quite a few this year, absentee ballots that they will not be here or even able to make the earlier absentee voting. So you can still get that in, but it would have to be back to us by May 5th, that is the deadline. And the deadline to register to vote at the Financial Town referendum has passed. That was April 21st, it was well-publicized. So if you are not a registered voter, you cannot vote at the FTR, which will require picture ID.
Tax change?
Tax change.
Tax change.
Oh, that was, I just gave the copy of the notice, because we wanted it put on clerk base and everything, so that the public would be aware of it as well. We are by law have to notice it, we did put it in the paper.
It was, I saw it on the paper.
By the way, reviewing the charter today, I noticed that it is the council president that calls the notice to be advertised for the Financial Town referendum, just in case I forget to put it in.
No, it did, it did. I saw it, because I got a phone call saying, "Your budget." Your budget.
You're required to put the notice
Yes.
On the day.
I saw that. Okay. Counselor Lambert.
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws, Chapter 42, Section 46, 5A2, Ray potential litigation, and Chapter 42, Section 46, 5A4, Ray-related investigation, Fire Department.
Second.